All right, I would like to go ahead and call the regular city council meeting for Monday, November tenth, 2025 to order at 6:00 PM. If we could say the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call the roll, please? Ludwig? Haynes?
Here.
Jenkins?
Here.
Ben Alsberg?
Here.
Rhines?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
All right, I'm looking for approval of this evening's agenda unless there are changes that need to be noted.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Thank you, do I have support?
Support.
Thank you, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. I am not seeing anybody in our audience, so I will move on to our council meeting minutes about October 27th, 2025. I'm looking for approval of the minutes unless there are changes that need to be noted.
Move to approve the council minutes as stated.
Thank you, do I have support? Support. Thank you both, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we are at our accounts payable. Terry, where did the money go?
Okay, in this episode, we have, it's about a quarter million dollars. And this time, the other, the ad valorem things, the other government units were only 20%, which is kind of, which is lower than the usual. John had a question about this 90K fee that amounted to 20%. The one, the one fee was 20% of the, no, I'm sorry, it was 40% of the, of the total budget. And it was a bond payment for 2017 water treatment plant improvements.
Okay.
And I didn't know this until I started doing this kind of stuff. But unlike you and your mortgage, or everybody in your mortgage, when the city borrows a bunch of money like that, they make an annual payment. So when they make an annual payment, it's a lot of principal and a lot of interest, and that's why it was such big numbers, okay?
Great, thank you.
So now you know. Okay, the micro purchase was $1.47 for markers. We should know about. The city spent $30,000 on new sidewalks, repair sidewalks. They spent $3,000 on a new facade for a downtown business. And they spent about $6,000 on chain work, chainsaw work in the park. And it was a really good idea. So, any other questions or do I make the motion go ahead?
Yeah, on the sidewalks, are we still the same property owner?
Yes.
We used to do it in the past like that.
So if a property owner requests a new sidewalk, then there is a cost share component.
Okay.
The ones that are, that were all fixed this past round were either broken beyond the pair of a reasonable fix, or they're above the threshold, which is, I believe, two inches for a broken fall. So the city, we paid for all that.
Okay, good, thanks.
And I think we should mention too, that moving forward, when we have major road products, or road projects on our secondary streets and something like that, that we will try to factor in the sidewalks, correct?
Correct.
Because we want them to be as ADA compliant as possible.
Yeah, I mean, that example, not to get too far off topic, but we did that on Lloyd Street. There were sidewalks on majority of Lloyd, we filled them in.
All right, thank you, so we have-
Lloyd Street, Bunshe Street.
Great. We have the motion, do I have support for the accounts payable motion? Oh, I'm sorry, he had a question first, my apologies. No, you, he had a question, so you go ahead and make your motion.
Yes, the motion is to accept checks 78682 through 78699, and ACH 1847 through 1880, for a grand total of $236,000, $236,023.75.
Thank you, do I have support?
Definitely.
Thank you. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Ben Alsberg?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
All right, moving on, we have two action items. The first is our garage sale ordinance, this is something new. I'm going to turn this over to our city manager, John Hannafin. We do have a memo in our packet from him.
Thank you, we discussed this last February, and about possibility of looking into the regulation of garage sales, rental sales, et cetera. We currently do not have any regulations to that effect. By and large, most of the community is, is, you know, considerate of their neighbors, and they are holding weekly, or monthly, or, you know, seven, eight weeks in a row, garage sales. But this frankly is worn out, we do have one property in town that continues to essentially operate like a resale business, under the guise that we don't have any permit requirements for these types of sales. So I put together just a, kind of a standard list of things that are included with communities that do have some sort of regulation. Typically, there's an ordinance that specifies the operating hours, and then no more than a certain number per year. Somewhat, you know, personally indifferent to how many we allow or don't allow. But I do think we need some level of regulation, because currently, there's nothing to restrict folks from operating on the lawn, or in their driveway for sales year round, every week, every day.
Okay.
So it's a fairly common thing for local governments to regulate. So really, the decision point tonight is to either direct staff to move forward with crafting an ordinance. So I've got some really good examples from other communities already. And we can do that, otherwise we'll let it drop, and we'll just explain to folks that have complained that we have no provision, it was presented to council, and they decided not to move forward.
Right, I think that, and I see both of your hands, I think that this is a good idea, because I think in the past 12 to 18 months, our city staff has received more phone calls regarding this. So there is a community concern. So I appreciate that you put this together, I saw Dan's hand first, and then I'll go to Terry, so if you can first.
So, my first instinct was, oh, we want to regulate garage sales, really? But from talking to city manager Hannafin previously about this, since he's come on board, this consistent, persistent use of the front yard as a resale space is the most complained about issue he's had since he's taken over as city manager here. So that it's not, we're not running around looking for a problem, this is something that's been brought to-
His attention.
To his attention. The thing, I think we have to address it somehow. What I don't want us to end up with is something where we're shutting down the 10-year-old lemonade stand because they didn't get a permit. So how do we strike that balance, that, that's kind of where I'm at.
If we did that, Chief would have no lemonade during the summer, so lemonade is off the table. We'll make sure of that. But I think you're absolutely right, we have to find a balance for this. And I, I appreciate that, because you're absolutely right. It's, it's a, it's a, we don't want this to be a nuisance, and we also don't want to be a nuisance to our residents that are, you know, selling grandmas, you know, silverware and dishes. Terry?
So comparison of two ordinances, there's the golf cart thing, and then there's the yard sale thing. During the golf cart thing, I cautioned against government being too restrictive and too demanding, and too concerned about little details that weren't really, that didn't really need to get into. In this case, I'd be on the other end of the spectrum and say, this is something that's gotten out of control, and that's what causes government to move to do this kind of thing, so it's more than that.
Yep, yes. Steve?
Sort of Terry's position on government involvement, just management involvement. I've seen too much where people react because of one individual, and then we have a blanket management where we impugn the thoughts of everyone. So my question is, I agree with us having to have something, because I've seen the one area that, that has caused, not only the appearance, but the traffic flow in there, it has to be pretty difficult. Is there nothing we have statewide, or anything we can point to in our ordinances now that we could, I guess, point it out to that individual? Anything at all that we, you've come across and we could say, yes, that-
So I think city manager probably has had conversations regarding this.
Yeah, there is, and in our research, the, once upon a time, in the general code, because this would be a general code thing, there was some regulation of garage sales, rummage sales. And that was when the, that was updated some time ago. Holly, how long, it was 15, 20 years ago, do you remember? It was a while ago.
She was in third grade.
Yeah, yeah, well, it was, it was amended, and the restrictions were removed.
Right.
And so there are some middle ground out there too. I don't think, you know, I'm kind of, I don't really want to create another permit process, and I'll put the research, if council chooses to move forward. We've already done most of preliminary work. There's a number of communities that have a limitation, but they don't require a permit.
Right.
So then it's more of a demand responsive code enforcement thing, which is, which is fine, because then it's self-evident, and we would, we're not going to keep track of every last fine detail, but, you know, again, I don't think the intent of allowing it, or not regulating it, was to have a permanent resale shop in a residential area. And like I said, there's nothing that would preclude anybody else anywhere in the city from doing that.
Right, and yes, Scott, go ahead.
I have a different opinion.
Okay.
Okay, I know, I think you're calling something a problem because it's successful. And I agree that he should only be able to do so many per year. But the notion that someone shouldn't be able to put stuff for sale anywhere on their yard, sorry, I don't buy that. If you're, if you're going to have a sale, you should be able to put it wherever you want on your yard, not on the funeral home's yard, but on your yard. And there should be a limit to how many times they can do it per year. But the notion that people are coming to be there, no, sorry, I don't buy that as a problem.
Okay.
I think what we're talking about here is currently, there is no limitation for the number of times that can occur.
Correct.
And this is the remedy to that, how many times.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
So that might be a problem.
Yep.
What Dan's talking about, that might, now, my question is about signage placement.
Sure.
Can we really?
I, so here's what I'm going to say, I'm going to wrap this back around, so we're getting in the weeds, and Tim, I just saw your hand too. We have to direct our city manager, if we want to pursue, to have further discussion on this, and bring us back language that we could develop into an ordinance, or a set of rules, or whatever word you call that. I do think we have to be mindful of right-of-way signage, so that would be a part of that future discussion. And you're absolutely right, Scott, I don't think we can infringe on somebody's ability to do something if they're successful, but I think there has to be limitations. So I think we're in the right conversation path. Hold on, Terry, I'm going to ask Tim to weigh in, because he had his hand up.
Thank you. What's under discussion here is the police powers ordinance to regulate. What you're otherwise talking about is a land use issue, which would fall under the zoning ordinance. And the concern would be the commercial use of residential property. And perhaps another option would be to look at what constitutes a commercial use of residential property. And you could say that having one or two garage sales per year is not commercial use, but having more than that transforms the property into a commercial use, and then you've got a zoning violation.
Okay, all right. Terry?
So, we did the golf cart thing, and I think it took us five meetings, grand total, something like that.
Yeah, about three months.
Yeah, like that. So it seems to me that we've just done this thing, we have a pattern in front of us, because we've done this before, we could just, nothing to it.
Right.
We can just, it'd be easy.
Yep, so what, John, you're the only one that hasn't weighed in, come on.
Yeah, I wanted to hear what everybody else had to say. Because I started off with your immediate reaction too. You know, I have to look into our ordinance book, if we can't find, you know, a section of our ordinance book that would relate to incitements, I don't know.
Yeah.
And as far as the business use, I, I'm, agreement is not the right verb.
Right.
But I immediately sprung them on, I go, well, it's a business.
Right.
You know, and I had to contend with that in the city of Williamson for 35 years. I think we should look at it from that perspective, rather than spending another five months. You know, because the lemonade stand is going to come up.
Sure.
It's going to come up.
Sure, absolutely. Well, okay, so the motion that John has put before us is a motion to direct staff to direct the first reading of an ordinance to provide rules, permit process for garage sales, rummage sales, yard sales, and similar activities. I think if somebody's going to make a motion, that we would like to have further discussion on this. I think we have to be clear with, and I, and I received phone calls directly regarding the property in question, that it was unsightly, that it was continuous, that it was bleeding over into their property. So I think there has to be a remedy of some sort. I don't think that we need to get too deep in the weeds with rules and restrictions, but I think, you know, in the future, we might need something that says, what's allowable, what's not. And like I said, with, like Tim said, signage. People shouldn't understand that, you know, right-of-way signage is, you have to, so. I think maybe a little bit more discussion on this. But I'll open it up if somebody would like to make a motion, or how we want to move along.
One, one thing, and then I'll make a motion personally, if we're going to move along with this, how I would like to see, see it directed for an ordinance, if that's the way we're moving, to craft one. I would be open to something with restrictions on number of times per year. Like however many that number is, but that would be like, that number's 12, one a month?
Mm-hmm.
Or whatever, something like that, with a notification to, to the city. Like not exactly a permit, but call it pay bar, on the third weekend of May, we're going to, we're going to do this, or whatever. And then, in the, whatever that would be. But not, not requiring a monetary permit, and things like that.
Well, and I would like to see what other communities have in place, because I think that's helpful for us. And certainly, this would be, this would not pertain to those lemonade stands, or children that are out there selling, you know, shaved ice snow cones, or something like that. So I think having, you know, a small, one-page, what's allowable, what's not allowable for a garage sale within the city limits of Williamson, I don't think that's a bad thing. Tim?
A quick question, when we're talking about the kids selling lemonade, does that have to fit in there? And that's just to be garage sale specific? Do we not have to worry about the lemonade stand?
Through our city manager?
So the City of Mason's ordinance on this, they don't have a permit process, they do have some limitations, but I think the ordinance is about seven or eight sentences.
Sure.
It's very succinct, talks about the limitations, number per year. But it also addresses folks who are, you know, selling a dresser, or like want to give away like an old TV or something like that, they allow up to five, that don't count as a, as a rummage or garage sale, so. There's a lot of ways to be creative.
Sure.
And frankly, a lot of, a lot of those ordinances have been updated or recent, like in the last couple of years. Fowler Bills is from 2022, and they've gone full-on regulation.
Sure.
You shall have a permit, you shall pay this, and that's just, that's just how they chose to address that issue. Maybe it was more of a profound issue for them citywide, or built to.
Sure.
There's a million ways to do it, we'll try and be concise, and there'll be options. And like I said, I'm somewhat indifferent to like the actual, you know, specific to the regulation. It's just, this is the A1, the most complaints I've received since working here has been about that type of issue.
Right, Scott?
So something similar, kind of to this happened in Williams County, but the Clayes had a, it was called Barn Fest. And it was pre-beer, and it was seven years.
Yeah.
And the first three or four years, like 30 people were there, and then it took off.
Yeah.
And last year, it was like Woodstock. It was like people were staying overnight, there was tasks, it was amazing. Well, it was too amazing, apparently, because then there was complaints, and then they shut them down.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I'm like, I can't tell you how annoyed that makes me, because I want people to do stuff.
Right.
And if people are going to, people are always going to complain about stuff that you do. And someone's always going to complain about it. It's up to us to say, we're sorry that you're complaining, but we want stuff to happen in our town.
Right.
That's what makes us successful, stuff happen.
Yep, I agree 100%, thank you, Scott.
Yeah, one more?
Yes, Tim?
This is all over one property, you know, this all of that. So how many times a year do they actually do this? It's going to be the thing that comes down to saying, okay, if we're going to limit times, how many, often is it done now compared to what was?
So John, I guess if you could give us that 30,000-foot view, is it only one property that you have complaints on? Or is it, have you received complaints on other properties?
He's the only one that's complaining about this, this issue, but I think not speaking of the school, we're about 15 years behind on a number of other code enforcement things, and we're playing catch-up.
Yep.
So, and again, you know, if we choose to move forward on this, awesome. If you decide, if there's far enough votes, then we're done, so there's no point in. For me, I don't have anything further.
Okay. All right, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to direct staff to draft the first reading of an ordinance, provide rules and permit process for garage sales, rummage sales, yard sales, and similar activities to be presented at a future council meeting.
Do I have support for the motion?
Support.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? Yes.
Steve? Assume this will be done based on our conversation, but I don't think it has to be in the form of a motion, but I would like us to have staff look at our current ordinances to see if there's a way for us to attack that issue without going through the ordinance process.
I'll make a comment on that after we take the vote, let's, yes.
Are you voting?
Yes.
If, if there was a way to do that, this wouldn't be in front of me.
Right, yep, so I'll, I'll add something to that. Terry?
As far as the flexibility stuff, just as with the, with the golf cart thing, there were, I think there were six things that we ended up voting on.
Yes.
So there was, there were six kind of issues, and there was a range of things.
Yes.
Listened in with this, this ordinance as well, and that's an idea.
Yep, so we have a motion, we have support. My last comment is that if city staff is bringing this to us, they wouldn't bring us something if they didn't feel that there was a need for us to at least look at it and see if we want to move forward with it. So I would like to investigate this by having staff bring us something. And that's my final comment on it. Anybody else before I ask Holly to call the roll? Holly, will you call the roll, please? Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Haynes?
No.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Alsberg?
Yes.
Okay. So I will make one comment on this. Back about eight years ago, we asked McKenna to go through an exercise with our planning commission regarding ordinances and zoning. It started, it stalled, it never got picked back up. I am glad that my book has been making it around this table, so that you can all see what is in it, what's enforceable, what's non-enforceable. And that's an exercise, I think that we do need to look into the beginning of next year, because I think we have a city manager that can help direct that and drive that. So that's just that comment, that we did try this one time, and we didn't get very far with it.
As a general kind of thing, could I ask you, you say we're 10 years behind on our code enforcement kind of a thing. What other, just big picture, 30,000, what do you think of the kind of things? This is a big, yeah, this should be the new address.
It's more modernizing our code, I think our approach to being demand responsive. I know there's not unanimous consensus from the council on that, but being demand responsive. But there's been some areas that have just, specific code enforcements that are violations that have been ignored, or, or passed on, because it's quote-unquote, always been that way. And so, and every community, and Chief Weiss had some contacts when he was the police chief of the village of Lennon. It's, code enforcement can be very, very expensive, because you start, if you try to be too heavy-handed, you end up, Mr. Chrome could back you up, he's probably paid for his house up north. If you get, if you get too aggressive with code enforcement, you end up in expensive litigation, and so. So there's, there's a balance, so the, the behind part is just specific properties. We mentioned one before, and I've said it before out public, 131 Love Street was a consistent code enforcement issue.
Yes, it was.
Through a variety of ways, we were able to help clean that property up, and by code enforcement, and also by working with the landlord, et cetera.
Yep. All right, we will get, we will have this as a part of our goal-setting and our visioning session after the first of the year. Because I do think we need to look into what can be code enforcement and what can be complaint-driven. I think we can find a good balance on that. Moving on to our action items, we have the 2026 health insurance renewal. And we do have a memo in our packet from our treasurer, Tom Mead, so I'm going to turn that over to you, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Essentially, what we're looking at is what would typically be a pretty standard renewal for the health benefits of the employees. However, what made this challenging this year is the plan that we have had for the last number of years. We were informed early in this year, earlier in this year, that it would be coming to an end, at the end of '25. So we had to, like, I mean, without choice, we had to look somewhere else to find alternative coverage. So the agent that we have gone through for a number of years offered some other options, as well as, and bear in mind, this wasn't just City Williamson, they had this plan that was terminated at, like, you know, several other municipalities. So it was a pretty active topic for a while in Listserve, and with the treasurer of Listserve. So in looking at what a lot of other municipalities were, were looking at for other agents and other alternatives, we explored a few of those. One turned out to not be very practical for Williamson area because of lack of the preferred providers in the area, and, you know, there's so many variables, and health insurance and stuff. But we did come across one that they use a pooled approach, and it's, so you can get some savings through economies of scale. And thank goodness, we, we feel very good that we found this, because it's significantly cheaper. The proposals we were getting for the alternative plans from our current agent, we were looking at like, you know, 28% increase in price, like 50, about $55,000 a year increase in price. This, we're getting a little bit, actually quite a bit better coverage for significantly less, for not quite half that. So our recommendation is that we would go with this. It's got a molecule here, it's in the Blue Cross Blue Shield Value HSA Level 139 slash 140 Health Insurance Plan Offered Under the Western Michigan Health Insurance School. And that we would continue with our normal 1,250 individual, $2,500 family HSA contributions. The dental vision and life would also be, and short and long-term disability would also be renewed, but those plans are, have not changed, they're still active plans from what we've had in the past, so those would just be simply renewals. So that's kind of what we're proposing, or asking for here.
All right. I appreciate the thoroughness of your memo to us, and I know this probably was not an easy task. Do you know any other municipalities that are using the plan that you are looking to move to? And have you had conversation with them?
Quite a few, yes, and that's one reason that led us to the, to go with that. Some of them have been used, I mean, it started over Grand Rapids area, hence the name of West Michigan, and a lot of them have used it over there for a number of years, and they, because of their ability to get the lower rates by, the economies of scale, by pooling municipalities, it's become popular, and it's moved, you know, kind of moving across the state. So there's actually even a number in this mid-Michigan area, even, you know, further east even. So, you know, we've, we've talked through the Listserve with a number of them that are very happy with it.
Okay.
And it's, it is a common Blue Cross Blue Shield plan, so that's widely accepted, so.
Dan, I saw your hand.
So this is probably a city manager question, but, so we have the city hall staff, but then we also have the two units that are collectively bargained. Is this all kosher with all that, with their current contracts?
Go ahead.
Yeah, that, that's a great question. The, the Astme contract, which is Public Works, and a couple of utilities folks, their, their, their language kind of lights comparable coverage, but not anything specific as far as like deductibles and things like that. The police contract does have some, some deductibles that are in the coverage that we're, so we're in line with the contract.
Okay, great question. Any other questions? Yes, Scott?
Yeah, I had sent a note to John and to you. It's a Blues program. So the question that I would have professionally asked 30 years ago is doing things local. Evergreen Financial, Mike Wurzlein, has the schools, Blue Cross Blue Shield. So Mike at Evergreen would be a natural for us to place the business. And I'm open to approving the change, I'm hoping- And I'm open to approving the change, I'm hoping for the plan, but I really think, I, I really think it would be, uh...
In the future, when it comes up for renewal, we look local, see if we can pull?
Yeah, I, run, run it by, run it by Mike.
Sure, sure.
I, I don't know why we're not doing business local.
Okay.
Cause Mike's been doing this for years and as I say, he does schools with Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Okay.
Local businessman.
Okay.
Resident of Williamson area, professional. Yeah.
Yes, through city manager.
So we, we're under no, other than, you know, we're at a point where we have to make a decision because our, our coverage renews on a calendar year. Like, you know, I'm not sure why the previous agents are used. Frankly, we, we got rid of cabinet because they, in my opinion, they weren't doing a, um, doing the best bias as far as like researching plans. Because what we presented to you tonight in, in that table is the coverage that we used to have and then cabinets take on the closest they can get through Blue Cross and then Gallaghers. But, but we looked at, what, probably 30 different, like similar, um, columns in a spreadsheet for a coverage map. But as far as whether it's Gallagher or Evergreen, I mean, as long as there's no conflicts of interest with anybody, um, locally, I mean, that certainly makes sense. We can, we can reach out to Evergreen next year and have them reach for coverage.
Okay, I think that'd be, I, I appreciate that, John, because we do have local businesses that could potentially serve our city, so I like that.
So we're, we're having to make a decision on who places the business because we've got the condo on it? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I don't think that's what I'm hearing. I'm hearing that they looked at who could provide quotes for insurance coverage. Yes, John?
So again, you know, I haven't been here, you know, forever, I guess this would be the third time I put this in front of you. I, I'm not sure why previous councils or administrations have recommended local. I, I can't answer that, but I think moving forward, we can certainly give them the opportunity. Uh, we're certainly, it'd be a wise thing to do.
Yeah, and I would, I would say, and Dan, you've been here, um, almost as long as I have sitting at this table. Um, it's always been based on the recommendation of city staff. I mean, I personally didn't know Mike did that. Now I've been, I've got knowledge now. Um, so I would, you know, say yes, if we can look for local providers, great. But again, based on our city staff's, you know, knowledge and, and everything, we go, we've gone in the past with the recommendations they brought to us. I wouldn't necessarily use the terminology used, but we always, you know, we put our trust in our staff. Dan?
It sounds to me like, and I, I have, I think it would be good going forward to make sure that as we're going through this process, in addition to putting it out on the lift serve with the, with the cooperative that we have with the different communities, we also make sure that we're reaching out to the local groups like Evergreen and making that a part of the process. It sounds like staff is, um, is very open to doing that in the future. And we do this on a year, nearly a yearly basis. Um, but I don't, I think staff has done their due diligence for this year and they've, they've looked at a lot of different providers, a lot of different plans. And while we could put this off to see what Evergreen has, I think, I, I think we, we've got enough for, um, for tonight and this year with what staff's already done for the 2025, 2026 going forward.
Steve?
What is the timeline? I know it's for the next calendar year, that's only a month and a half away.
I am very glad you asked that. Um, I will be honest, this agent, um, Gallagher is getting very antsy because, again, that plan that was discontinued, it was the University of Michigan Health Plan, so they covered a lot of municipalities. So there's a lot of municipalities in the same boat trying to make a change in this last couple of months of the year. And I will admit, he, I've been getting email, he's getting kind of panicky. He was hoping we'd make a decision last month even and, um, he's concerned about the timeframe of getting everybody switched over, getting the new, everybody to get new cars shipped to, you know, there's a, it's, it's a process of going through, you know, you're going to get medical cars, dental cars, vision cars, health insurance cars. Um, you know, it, it is a process and he's pretty antsy on this short calendar as it is. And I totally agree, I, I have nothing against looking local, I think it'd be great. I mean, we'd love it if we had somebody local we can go to and it's comparable. I just wasn't aware that we had somebody in town that was able to do that. Um, my thought on it, if I could interject that, is I would be more than happy to look for them next year. But given the time constraint right now, I would like to, I hope we could get some direction tonight.
Sure, so I'm going to ask a couple of questions because I would do this if this were, if this were me in my, um, day job. When did we receive notice that this, the plan that we're currently on was being discontinued? When did we receive notice?
Can't give you an exact date, but it was, oh, I don't know, last late spring, early summer, maybe something in that.
Okay, so why, when did you start looking for new plans?
Probably in the, well, okay, two things. The current agent we had, they sent out some proposals, some alternative proposals right away. But the other issue which I hadn't mentioned that we faced with is insurance companies don't get our, the new rates for 2026 until about October, um, like the two that we were really working with just got us the rates for 2026 in October.
Okay.
So we were looking back then, but it was based on current 2025 rates, the current rates we had. They, and they didn't know what, you know, things we're going to do for next year.
Okay.
So it's kind of hard to do it apples to apples comparison when you don't know, you know, what, um, how much. Cause you know every year the health insurance rates go up. Um, we also had to, you know, factor in some things like what are the contracts, you know, to make sure we cover everything that are in the marketing unit contracts and, um, just, you know, a number of steps, I guess, that we went through, it just took a little time to, to get it.
Okay.
And to find someone that we felt that we could get that good mix of good coverage with, uh, reasonable cost and just a little longer than we anticipated to find them.
So the only suggestion I would make is that if something like this happens again where we receive notification that early in the year, I think that's important to bring that to our attention so that we know that something's being worked on. Um, I understand that the renewal rates weren't available until October. And yes, this is the first meeting of November and we have two more meetings before we conclude for the year. Um, so I do feel like we need to move forward on this. I would like, after the first of the year, for, you know, city staff to maybe have conversation with our local provider, just to see if they're, um, handling school, um, employee insurance, then that might be a conversation to have early on. Um, and I, I get, um, timeframes and, and all that type of stuff. Um, but I would just say, um, in the future, if something like this comes up that's going to be significant, that we're informed about it so that we have that, um, in the back of our mind going forward, that we know that there's going to be a change. Yes, John?
Yeah, I, there, there might be a little bit of misunderstanding. I'm not disregarding your work and the plan. If it costs $10 to Gallagher, it will cost $10 to Evergreen local.
Right, right.
So it's not the plan.
Right.
Or the benefits or the advantages to the employees or...
But it's using local provider.
It's a local, professional, skilled provider that's doing our schools.
Yep.
That we are bypassing because we're a little rushed, so.
I appreciate that. Um, would somebody like to make the motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the Blue Cross Blue Shield Value HSA Level 139 slash 140 Health Insurance Plan Offered Under the Western Michigan Health Insurance Pool With A Continued $1,250 Individual Slash $2,500 Family HSA Contribution For The 2026 Calendar Year And Approve The Renewal Of The Existing Dental Vision Life Short And Long Term Disability Insurance Plans Currently Offered.
Wow, thank you.
That's not a recommendation?
It's a requested action at the top.
Yeah, it's the requested action at the top, not the recommendation at the bottom.
That's what it is, okay, I got it.
Yep, it's the requested action at the very top. Um, thank you so much. Do I have support?
Certainly.
Thank you. Any other questions, yes?
I'm confused, okay, so what are we approving or disapproving?
The motion to approve the Blue Cross Blue Shield Value HSA Level 131, 140 Health Insurance, blah, 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 for the 26 calendar year. And approve the renewal for the existing dental, vision, life, short-term, long-term disability insurance plans that are currently offered.
And so we're enabling our city manager, Tom?
Yes.
To place it with?
The Western Michigan Health Insurance Pool, yes.
Okay, again, I think we're a little confused.
Okay.
Mike Gorzline through Evergreen could do that. That, that's my point.
Does the problem...
So make it a motion to put it through Gallagher.
The, the problem is we don't have, this all has to get done in time for our employees.
For everything to switch over before their current insurance expires in the pool that they're in.
Beginning of January and we don't have any of the things from Evergreen today. We don't know the comps from him. This is what we have before us to try and make it sure our employees have continued health coverage because the other one is...
That there's no lapse.
There's no lapse.
I, I understand this, but I would like it in public record that we have made the decision to not place it locally.
Yes.
By placing it at Gallagher.
I acknowledge that, I do acknowledge that. I do acknowledge that, yes. Yes, Steve?
Since Tom's already done all the research and the, um, review, we know what we're asking for.
Yes.
Could we, uh, turn this over to Evergreen and say, you've got $48 to give us a quote for this exact same thing?
You have to have a special meeting.
Yes, your city manager.
So, so I'm gonna, I mean, speak candidly, it's, it's a little unusual for, uh, it's, even if they're the, the best vendor we've ever had, it's a little unusual for a council member to specifically advocate for, for a vendor. Um, doesn't mean that we won't use that vendor in, in the, in the future, but as staff, if we're going to select vendors, I mean, I don't know how many other insurance agents that, that we have within the Williamson city limit and, and I'll, I'll go back to, to the default before. If, if, if that's what's desired by a council moving forward, we, we can certainly do that. Um, it hasn't been the past practice and, and typically with insurance, you, you have a coverage map that, that you're, you agree to with your employees either, you know, non-union or bargain for. And then you, you cycle through the insurance agent and you have. If, if there's a desire in the future to, to open this up, I mean, I think that we should open it up to, to everyone.
Correct. It would be an open bid process.
Provide the insurance, correct.
It would be an open bid process. Um, I do not have a problem with that moving forward. I, like I said, I was educated this evening to know that we do have an insurance agent here in town that can handle this. There may be others, so it would be, you know, it would be the responsibility of the city staff to look at all options available for future, uh, insurance pools.
So the years I've been here, this has come up every year, never had the idea of being locally the local insurance agent. So this time it's kind of a surprise thing, it's at the last minute. So let's say next year we have, and it's not, I'm sure there's more than one insurance agent in town. Um, so next year, let's make sure that the treasurer is looking for these options. Can you make sure he contacts the local guys?
Yes, yes, I...
That's sufficient.
Exactly, that is, um, an open bid process. Um, we have a motion, we have support. Any other discussion?
Do we have support? I know I made a...
Did somebody... Yes, yeah, all right, Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Gilroy?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Alsberg?
Yes.
Rhimes?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. That concludes our action items for this evening, moving along on our agenda. Our discussion items at ours are usual three, our construction project updates, our master plan update, and our main force safety improvements. So I'll turn this over to our city manager, John Hannipin.
We're done with construction for the season. Um, we'll be putting together a list of potential projects for our next fiscal year. We do have some funding still left for local streets or sidewalks, so we'll be looking at, at those and then potentially doing some of those yet in this, this fiscal year that we're still in, so that's good. Um, as far as the master plan update, we did have a planning commission meeting last week. We had, again, another really good discussion about the, the, making sure that the master plan is reflective of all the work that we've done to date, whether it's the public, um, input, uh, survey or the, the work sessions that we've had, joint work sessions with council, media and, and planning commission. Um, we are hopeful to have a draft approved by the planning commission for city council to review, um, at the December meeting. So that, that, that part would go pretty fast, but then there's a mandatory 63-day review period for the community to provide input. So still a ways to go until we get to a final plan, but I think as far as the planning commission's, um, first initial big step, we're pretty close on that, so that's good. Main force safety improvements, we had a few drivers in town about 9:00 AM this morning. I'll use a joke Chief Weiss, um, used this morning, how many engineers does it take to, uh, place a, uh, communications pole downtown? But we had MDOT and then, uh, DTE was there, Frontier, 123NAT. So, um, really this was the first meeting for the placement of the new signal, um, hardware, I guess you'd say. And it was really just a, a utility conference meeting to make sure that there weren't any underground stuff, um, that would be in conflict. We talked about some of the locations for, uh, the new mast arms. They, for the most part, they'll be in the same, we, we do have, we have the, the, the two large poles on the, um, the, I guess it would be the northeast intersection and then the, uh, southwest intersection. So there'll be, um, two to four poles like that placed, so. They'll, they'll build the new infrastructure first and they'll, they'll remove the old afterwards. So now, I mean, they plan on a, um, a winter bid letting for this and then with the plan of construction, I believe in fall of 2026.
And...
Does that include the left turn signal or does that just replace the signals?
It doesn't, doesn't currently.
Right.
But there, the idea is that the cabinet, there will be a new cabinet that comes with it as well. But the idea is that it will be, the signal, the signal hardware we have now is, is like, almost its original. So it's ancient, it's not a smart signaling or anything like that. They'll have smarter technology and a turn lane will eventually be, could be added to the signaling relatively soon.
And when Phil Westmoreland from Spicer is here again, he can give us more of that update regarding our pedestrian interception and, and signaling and all of that as well.
Yep.
All right, great, thank you so much, Dan.
One question, I know this is not a Williamson project, but you had a little bit of information on it last time. Have you heard anything more on the Grand River Bridge project, when the thought that would be completed?
I haven't, I haven't heard any update, there's a, I mean, I haven't released any.
They were pouring concrete, I know that, they were pouring concrete this week.
They're down to one, they're down to one crane. I mean, that was, that's neither case. We saw that, uh, this weekend, so.
I knew this wasn't, it was, it sounded like a surprise, but you had mentioned it at our last meeting, so.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, moving along on our agenda, correspondence received, we do not have any, so we'll jump right into department type reports, we'll go back over to our city manager, Johnny Hannipin.
So I just want to congratulate both the volleyball and football teams for winning district titles last week and ironically, they both played Goodrich in the regionals. The volleyball plays tomorrow and then, uh, football plays on Friday. Should be another busy night in, in Williamson, um, so it's pretty exciting. Um, we do have a number of meetings next week, the third, third month, or third week of the month, so it's busy with DEA tip out and, and parks and, so.
All right.
That's all I need.
Thank you. Moving down the line, we have Chief, you have your, um, monthly police, police report in our packet, but give us some updates.
I do, the highlights, the statistics are there for October. The, um, we continue implementing the Lexapro policy system, um, that, that's going full steam ahead. Staff have been attending football games as well as myself. There's been very, very minimal issues there. Um, it's, it's going great. We all complete first aid, AD, CPR and policy training, which isn't the most exciting stuff, but it's yet necessary to do all those. No issues with trick or treating, um, that was a, a very busy night, uh, on Halloween night. No issues with trick or treating. Um, that was a, a very busy night, uh, on Halloween night. Uh, we participated with the elementary school Halloween parade, and if you've never been to that thing, uh, it was bigger than the Jubilee Parade. Um, the, it was, it was, it was big. So it, it was great to see. Uh, Officer Peelong attended the Twenty-Five Michigan Association of Hostage Negotiators Conference. Got some good information there. And, um, now that it snowed, the, uh, warning and education time period is concluded for, uh, two to five p.m.
All right, great. So I saw your hand, Scott. Um, is it correct that one of the officers, officers became an honorary flag member at the last football game?
He did, and, uh...
Because I saw a video, and he was pretty good.
And I gotta tell you, that, uh, Facebook post has broken the internet.
All right, good.
We're expecting it to be on the Today Show anytime.
All right, well, you guys are doing a great job over there, and I appreciate that. Scott, you have comment?
Yeah, there was some discussion at the, the joint meeting about us doing Williamson Township policing. Is that still a thing or...
Uh, I, I have not been approached. I don't believe, uh, city manager's been approached by Williamson Township. But I will say that, um, that's a possibility in the future, but we'll, we'll see how that goes.
Yep, not yet. Yes.
The only thing I would add to that is the contract's up in twenty twenty-seven. Um, so we have opportunity this winter to talk about, like, as a board and, and with, with the police chief about whether that, that we still think that would be a good idea. And, um, you know, I think preliminarily, I think it's a good idea, but we have to delve into the details, and then ultimately, all of you would have to decide that would be worth pursuing.
All right. Oh, yes, Terry?
Um, you have this chief's report here. I mentioned about Tinesa about this chief's report, and I think, I mean, they didn't go through me or anything like that, but they, they found this, and they used this as kind of a template for their own, new, that they began producing this, the fire chief's report for the month.
When you get, when you get one, will you please bring a copy of it so that we can see it?
Yeah, I've got one in home. I picked it up today. Yeah, I can do that.
Love to see it.
That's, uh, so...
That's progress.
Thanks for providing that. You know, sometimes people have this idea, and they just don't know exactly how to do it, but you provided the template, and, um, it's, it's really helpful. Thank you.
All right. And now to Tom, our treasurer. Anything to add?
Uh, maybe just a couple of quick things on, on stuff going on with the treasure department mandors, uh, treasurer as of, at least the citywide. Um, I think I'd also, or I think I'd actually talk to you some about our continued desire to get more internet security or online security or, or IP secure, all those kind of, the cybersecurity stuff that's going out. So we did, uh, implement the positive pay. It's been going for a couple of months now. Had good luck with it. Um, so basically, anything, any amount of money that's gonna come out of our account for any reason, it will be stopped until we give them notification. Either if we write a bunch of checks, we can give them that notification ahead of time in a file, and then they will clear, um, any other type of it, thing that may hit. It stops it. They'll notify us, "Hey, there's something sitting here that's trying to hit your account." And this works, this pertains to both checks and ACH, and any kind of withdrawal coming out of the account. So, uh, I can sleep much easier with that in effect now. And then kind of related to that, coming up, we are finally getting to our, uh, what we'd started a while back, a year or so ago, on our conversion to the cloud-based software. That actually is, uh, gonna take place now. Kind of started a little bit. They've done a preliminary data extraction, um, early this, or actually, it was in October. We are set to go live in early December on this new cloud-based software for all the accounting stuff. Um, it's extremely secure. They are telling us, um, actually had another training on just the other day, and they're saying that that's, I can't even imagine the size of these processing centers, but they're saying that that will be backed up every fifteen minutes. So if you have some sort of, uh, ransomware, malware or something, you know, you may lose fifteen minutes of work or whatever, and then you can, you know, can't get it back. Um, but the, the downside, the but to this is that period where we're gonna go live, we will actually be prevented from taking any transactions for a couple of days. It will start on, I think, December fourth, Thursday, December fourth, they're gonna start the live extraction, and we will not be able to take payments or anything. I mean, obviously, we can take them and write hand receipts or whatever, which we'll continue to do if people come in. And people can still pay on line during this period because it just goes into kind of a pending folder. And then Monday morning, um, they will work with us, and we should be up and live on the new system. And then all those payments that either people walked in, you know, we did the hand receipts for, or online payments will get posted, um, you know, at that point in time, and then we're live from that point out, so...
So I just want to make sure I'm correct in hearing this. People will be able to make payments? It just will take longer for their transaction process? So this is a behind-the-scenes?
Yes.
Delay. It's not, if I go out to try to make a payment on December fourth or fifth, I, I'll be able to. I, I'm not gonna know.
My understanding is if you're online, you won't hold any...
Okay. So it's a, it's a, it's a behind-the-scenes, back office delay.
You may get a notice saying, like, pending or something. Makes sense, something about pending.
That's fine.
If you come in, obviously, you know, you'll get a handwritten receipt or whatever. You won't, we won't be able to actually enter into the system at that point in time.
That's fine. I just didn't know if we needed to, you know, put something on our website, but because it's behind the scenes, you know, I would say it's just a delay in a transaction being processed, so... But thank you. I appreciate the fact that we're upgrading our systems. It's better security. It's encrypted. And let's hope we never have a ransomware situation where we lose fifteen minutes of, of something. Um, anything else? All right. Um, committee comments? Anybody have a meeting recently that they'd like to report on? And I know you just mentioned Nisa.
Nisa's coming up this week.
Okay, this week.
I'm hoping for Paul.
All right. Me too. All of us. We'll pick him up at it. Anyone else? Any meetings? I know we're at the beginning of the month. All right, there is no audience participation, so I'll jump right into council member comments. I'll start down with Tim.
I think we had a great discussion, uh, looking forward to working on this whole situation with garage sales and things of that nature, and some progress on that. And finding out that we have other people that, you know, open up to us for other things, I think, I think it's very, very local.
All right. Scott?
Yeah, a while ago, there was a discussion on the community page about cancer rates in Williamson. I don't know if any of you guys know that. Um, there was a couple of people that were here proposing, might be environmental causes for it. What I'm throwing out is whether, is that something that we just call hearsay and let it go? Or do we say, do we wanna look into this as a, like, I don't even know how we look into it. I just don't like the idea because I saw it. I'm going to...
Okay. Um, Dan, I'm ready for you.
So I know with the school as it relates to that, I believe the state actually investigated the schools for a cancer cell, and that was, there was, it was decided by the state health department that there was nothing conclusive within the schools. So that, that was investigated a few years ago. As far as the stuff about the whole town, I, I think you just have to, I mean, we, we know our water's tested on a regular basis, all those things. I don't think there's enough commonalities and everything. That's just kind of hearsay.
Okay.
All right. Steve?
Sort of piggybacking on, uh, Terry's comments about the chief's report, and I've thought about this type of thing for a while. Can we have, uh, staff look into a year-end report highlighting all of the things that the, the city has done? We have the sidewalks, we have the construction. Can we do something like that where we could? And I think that's important for the, the residents.
Mm-hmm.
If we, something we put on the Facebook or our website and just go through there.
Projects completed?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm pretty proud of what, I'm pretty proud of what has happened, uh, in the last year with what, uh, what we've been able to accomplish.
We talk about it a lot in these meetings, but it would be nice to have a capstone at the end of the year of, of what we've accomplished. Terry?
I try to drive on Monmouth Street at least once a week, just to appreciate it.
Oh, wow.
Um, and it's, it's white snow and lush green grass. It's, it's the first snowfall of the year. It's beautiful.
Yeah.
But don't be adventurous. Drive carefully. Okay?
Thank you. John?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up a little bit on the city manager's comment about advocating for local or specific. I, I see my role, uh, no differently than looking at a bid to lay cement or talk for a particular company. And that, uh, my comments should not be taken that I was a hired gun to advocate for local. I, I believe in local. And I would have appreciated it thirty years ago that the city of Williamson, et cetera, would look local. They were placing and have continued to place their business not locally, in some of the areas in which I worked. And I would have appreciated the councilperson standing up and saying, "Look, this person locally, who's lived here three, four generations, can do this for us. Why are we not looking locally?" So I've always advocated locally.
Thank you. Um, it is darker earlier now, so of course, I'm always going to say, um, be safe out there as we drive, um, in the evenings, watch out for especially the pedestrians that will be traversing our city streets the end of this week for our Friday Night Lights football game against, who are they playing against? Goodrich. Um, we've got some great things coming up that are gonna end this year. Um, number one, we've got our Ladies Night Out, which is the first Thursday of Thursday where our local businesses participate, offer some really great discounts, um, throughout some of our, uh, retail shops through our downtown. That's, uh, December fourth. And then we move right into our Williamson Winter Wonderland for, uh, December fifth and sixth. We've got some great activities. You can check out all of those activities on the Williamson's event page on Facebook. Uh, we will also post those on our city website and our light-up sign downtown as well. Um, going backwards a little bit, though, um, you've got your Shop Small in November. We're gonna have Phil Copcar, chief?
We are.
Uh, on Saturday of Thanksgiving weekend. That goes to our Harold Lotterson, uh, Williamson Food Bank. You can make monetary donations, or you can go into DNW and bring out groceries, and they will take those, uh, bagged groceries over to our, our, uh, local food bank. Um, I just want to thank our community for always pulling together, um, you know, throughout the year, and, and we're heading into the, that last month and a half of, of twenty twenty-five. It's been a great year. We've accomplished a lot. Um, but there's, uh, always going to be work to be done. So with that, I will go ahead and conclude us at seven oh two.